Evening. My name is Beth Pletto. I'm with the Development Manager for the Columbia County Child Abuse Assessment Center.
Just for the recording and people online, you have to speak directly or they don't hear you.
We pull it towards you.
Yes.
So I don't have to lean onto the desk? My name's Beth Pletto. I'm with the Amani Center, Columbia County Child Abuse Assessment Center. I'm the Development Manager. I've brought my Executive Director, Amelia Kircher, with me this year. Um, I, I think that you've seen our proposal and we are requesting $5,000 to support child abuse forensic investigations and assessments for children in Columbia County. The kids that we serve in Scapoose represent approximately 16% of the population of children that come through our center. And as far as the census is concerned, there's 5.7% of the children in our, in our county that are represented here in Scapoose. And just to give you an idea of the way that numbers have been going for us, in 2019, we saw the most kids in the center with 350. It declined after that because of COVID, obviously, and kids not having mandatory reporters seeing them. There was a 70% drop in child abuse reports to the statewide hotline. We still saw 267 kids in 2020, and then 185 in 2021, and we've started creeping back up again. We saw 224 last year. We have a full-time medical provider this year, and we've already seen more kids in the first four months of 2023 than we saw in the entire year of 2022 for medical exams. So it is critical program that we provide in our county, and we're hoping that you can support us again this year.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Just one quick one. I noticed you did, how many years have you been able to participate in this program?
This would, six. I've, I've been on staff for six, and I think the first year we applied, we were actually able to get funding.
Great. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right, now let's move on to CASA for Children. Okay, nobody for CASA for Children. If they do, someone shows up, let us know. Columbia Choral of Oregon.
City Councilors, I'm Margaret Trenchard Smith. I'm the Grant Manager for the Columbia Choral of Oregon and the Lyricist of the Wisdom of Columbia County. This is Kevin Bryant Lay, the composer of the Wisdom of Columbia County. This is a full-length cantata, I hope I can approach to show it to you, which will be performed on June 16th at Scapoose High School of this year, and on May 27th of next year will be performed at Carnegie Hall in New York City on its merits. The three chief creative partners, Alice Rice Boyer, the Artistic Director of the Columbia Choral, myself, the Lyricist, Kevin Bryant Lay, we're all from Scapoose. And what we're seeking to do with the $5,000, $5,000 that we hope that the Council will allocate through the CEP program, is to send our composer and our then-high-school-age drummer to Carnegie Hall. So that's it in a nutshell. We hope eventually to send 20 persons of high school age and send 10 of our choristers who are in greatest need to New York City.
So I wanted to play just a piece of this. There's eight parts to it, and this one's called "The Lager," and it's a mini-representation.
This work will make Columbia County and Scapoose itself words known well beyond the state orders, known nationwide, actually.
Thank you. That was a train whistle, of course.
We hear those.
Here comes the train. And as people are clapping, they're going like, "Scapoose! Scapoose!" You know, so. Can you hear it okay? Okay.
You can put the microphone up so Andrew can hear it as well.
Oh, it's wireless. That's six rehearsals so far. Sounded pretty good.
This is a cantata, so some of this is in prose. Earl Pence, who's the Santa Claus of St. Helens, will introduce each of the songs in prose, set up the characters and the situation, and then cap off their wisdom. And we're working as well in conjunction with members of the Yakama Nation.
Question I have, do you have members from your group, from Scapoose then as well, singers?
I'm sorry?
Singers from Scapoose?
Yes, yes. Many members of the choir from Scapoose. They're from all over the county.
Are planning on taking a bunch of them to this New York performance?
I'm sorry?
You'll be taking a bunch of them to the New York performance?
Yes, we will be. But we're also gathering a choir made up of choirs from throughout the nation.
Thank you so much for giving us your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scapoose Farmers Market, you are next.
Did you hear me well? Okay. Well, blank. I'm the manager of the Scapoose Farmers Market. Scapoose Community Club is a sponsor of the market. Last year, you were generous with us as we were trying to come back from COVID and the pandemic, and we asked for some more funding. But most of the time, our funding has come to the club and for things like Christmas lighting and things like that. Because what we needed, you concentrated on that, we concentrated on that, we were able to move forward. This year, what we're trying to do is bring back one other element that we hadn't had for a long time, and that is music, and bring it back to the market. And so we thought if we could have some help with that, we would go with that. We didn't ask for a lot, but we asked for a thousand. But that would cover for a full season. If not, we'll just scale down. We wanted you to know that if you could help us, they'll bring back something the community has lacked for some time, people have enjoyed, and I think it adds to the community at large as a, one of the factors of a good market, brings everybody together, and people enjoy it. I don't know what else to really tell you.
It's great. It's great. Appreciate it. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Okay, Scapoose Historical Society.
Evening, everybody. My name is Marty Erickson, and I am a member of the Scapoose Historical Society. And I'm here on behalf of Janet Williams tonight, who is the president, but she couldn't be here as she's out of town. So she wrote up a little blurb for me to share with you guys. The society is excited again this year to sponsor the Holiday Lights Insights Competition for the city. Last year, we had 12 homes enter the competition, and we expect the number to triple or quadruple based on the positive community feedback we received last year. The contest will boost the local economy by attracting visitors from neighboring towns to see the festival decorations. Additionally, the competition encourages creativity and innovation, which can inspire residents to decorate their homes and businesses in new and exciting ways. By supporting this event, the city can showcase its holiday spirit and create a welcoming atmosphere, residents and visitors alike. Overall, the Christmas lighting competition has the potential to enhance the city's identity and strengthen its sense of community. Our goal is to create an annual tradition to unify the community during the holiday season. The Historical Society started early this year, planning an entire month of Christmas events at the Watts House, based around the 1951 book, "How the Grinch Stole Christmas." The house will be themed as a Whoville and grinched inside and out, along with the lighting competition will draw many visitors and will especially be enjoyed by children. Thank you for the opportunity to present our request for funding at the Holiday Lights Insights Competition. You know, we know that you'll be proud of this event, and we appreciate your support. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you folks very much. And by the way, I really love the poppies here.
We got them up here too. Thanks. Okay, Scapoose Kiwanis Club.
Hey, guys. Ready? Sean McNabb usually does this spiel, and he bailed on me because he's at a baseball game presenting for the seniors with Mary. So I'm Amanda Longton. I teach 4th grade over at Otto Peterson, and I'm here representing the Scapoose Kiwanis Youth Rec Center. It's our 29th year, the 28th year this year, providing the summer program for the youth. Last year, our comeback from COVID, after not being able to have it for two years, we had over 150 kids sign up, which was a really big deal. And every, we were really excited to be able to have the kids again. It's been a while. We provide the summer program based out of Peterson. It's four weeks long where they can come Monday through Thursday from 8:00, from 10:00 to 5:00 and hang out at the school. We provide different activities and foosball table and a safe place for them to just hang out, opposed to out on the streets or not having a place to go. And then every Friday, we take them on field trips. This year, we're going to do Indiana Jones for our movie, and then swimming at Eisen Schmidt, bowling at the Oregon Trail's Bowling Alley, and then out to Oaks Park. And we hope it's not 90 degrees this year at Oaks Park. So we're asking you guys for $5,000, and we appreciate your support, like we've had it for the last 27 years, so.
Appreciate it.
Have any questions for us?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, guys.
Scapoose Library. Thank you. What do you from the library? Scapoose Little League. Pictures of umpires would really have benefited you guys of it. One's particular, yeah.
So I'm Ryan Murphy. I'm the new president of Scapoose Little League as of the first of the year. If you're not familiar with Scapoose Little League, we're 100% volunteer-based program, nonprofit. We've been part of the community for years. I'm a prime example. I went through the system, and it's gone full circle, where my dad was a part of Little League back when I was growing up. The principal, McHugh, was also my principal, but no, it's a strong, it's a strong, it's a fabric of our, you know, community. When I have the hat up here on purpose, if you look around, you can see the kids running around the community. You can see parents, grandparents. It's a, it's a source of pride in the community. It's also, with some of the programs that we do, as far as, just recently, we had the Little League Parade, where we had a big event where we had over 300 of our Little Leaguers, over 30 teams, probably nearly 1,000 people at Veterans Park, where we had, we actually had a sponsor, and we were able to provide free hot dogs. We had a home run derby, just really big community events. Last summer, we actually hosted the All-Stars Districts, easily bringing in well over 1,000 people to the community over a one-to-two-week period. And basically, what we like to do with the funds, anything that the city's able to offer us, is it does go back to the field maintenance, equipment. But all of that contributes, though. We purposely try to keep our registration fees down in our program. If you look at some of the, the bigger Portland areas, we're nearly $100 less than some of the registration fees. Really, I'm a strong believer in Little League. Everybody plays. Everybody has an opportunity to play. You know, you hear about some of the big travel programs and stuff where kids are getting cut. That's what I really like about Little League. Everybody has a chance to participate, and keeping the registration fees down is really a key contributor to that. So I appreciate your time and your consideration, and we're working really hard with our partners, with the city and the schools, in the fields, in tip-top shape. And we're working really hard at Veterans, specifically with some of the drainage issues and stuff that are going on right now.
Good questions, yeah.
That is a question that I have. So yeah, a portion of this would be for consultation on the drainage issues. Where does public, our Public Works Department come in in terms of units of that or not, or there's support there?
I can kind of explain the arrangement that we have with Little League, where during the season, so basically March through June, and then we take it over again in fall, basically towards the end of August, so September, October for Fall Ball, where Little League at Veterans Park specifically is responsible for Inside the Fence. So that's the mowing, the dirt work, everything that you see keeping the fields up, and that's a strong partnership with the city. We work hand-in-hand with them. There's times where things get pretty wet, and we're struggling to keep up with the mowing and stuff, and so. But the drainage is kind of an issue right now. Not sure. It's something, you know, that needs to be looked at. We'll definitely add more dirt to the fields. That tends to help, adding a little bit more sand-based fill on it as well. It's not a real clear line of delineation, but I think it's something that us as a program is willing to kind of support and investigate, participate in, whatever we have to do, you know, to keep the fields going.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did a great job.
Appreciate you. That means a lot coming from you, Mr. McHugh.
Riverside Community Outreach.
I believe in the packet, you guys have this, right? The 22 Impact Report. Okay, fantastic. Okay. My name is Abby Olson, and I am the founder and Executive Director of Riverside Community Outreach. We serve families impacted by foster care in our, in Columbia, and also actually in Clatsop and Tillamook County as well. Right now, in Columbia County, there are 83 children in foster care today, and 10 of those families reside within the Scapoose boundary. Yeah, the Scapoose City Council has been very generous and has supported us for the last two years as we have recruited and supported and tried with prevention and retention of our foster families. When I founded RCO six years ago, one of the things that I knew was really important was the desire to make things better. When I became a foster parent back in 2003, there was no one to call for help. You were basically on your own. So in the 12 years that I was a foster mom, if a child came into care and I needed something, it was on me to figure it out, whether that was a car seat, a bunk bed, clothes. We'd had kids show up at 10 o'clock at night with the clothes on their back. And during that time, there wasn't one thank you card that ever got sent my way. And I didn't become a foster mom so that someone would say thank you, but I can tell you that in 12 years, it felt very lonely. And sometimes I remember feeling very misunderstood, because when you're under the spotlight and you're parenting in public, people don't always get you when you show up with your parcel of children. And so my goal was to make things better for the foster parents today. So today, there is somebody you can call, and we provide car seats and beds and diapers and wipes. We recruit for more foster families, but we also make sure that we're serving the foster families that we have, because I can tell you, it takes too long and it's too hard to become a foster family to out-recruit the importance of retention. And just this past week, RCO provided a stroller for our grandparents who have a little baby, and they have some health reasons where it's hard for them to lift the baby, so they've got a really easy foldable stroller that they can use. One of our foster families' homes caught on fire, so on Saturday morning, we got a call, and by Saturday afternoon, they had gift cards to Walmart so they could go get the things that they needed. We provided 124 thank you baskets to our foster families, because on my watch, we're not going to not tell people thank you for opening their hearts and their homes. We provided baby items for a mom who's re-unifying with her kiddo so that she can get a second chance. She's done the hard work, and we're here to support her in coming back together with her child. And we also provided a car seat, wipes, clothes, and diapers for a 10-month-old who came into care with the clothes on his back. And my very favorite thing from 2022 that we have in our report is we were able to bring back Foster Parents Night Out, which is a program we had, and then it was shut down during COVID. It provides four hours of respite care for foster families. They can come and bring all of their kids, and we get to hang out with them for four hours, and we do games, crafts, blow-up slides, the Reptile Man was there. It's, it's awesome, and I love it. And it has been a huge blessing to our families to know that there's a place where they can go, and they can safely leave their kids. Their kids like to attend, and that helps us keep families continuing to say yes. One of the joys and challenges of being a nonprofit is we rely on the generosity of people like you. We don't make a product. We don't have something to sell. What we have is, we have the connections to the people and the way to serve them, and so we get to partner with you to help provide the funds to do that. So thank you for providing that for the last two years, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Run With Neil.
Dear esteemed council members, my name is Connie Thorpe, and I am privileged to be on the board for Run With Neil. As you're aware, we've applied for the $4,500 grant to assist in supporting with our third run, which is going to be on August 12th. The run is, coincides with the Adventure Fest, the Scapoose Adventure Fest this summer, and it's our largest fundraiser of the year. This is a copy of the flyer, I believe you have that in your packet, of just some of the things that we do, but we spend a lot of time as volunteers going around and posting these kind of things and trying to market not only for Run With Neil, but also for the Adventure Fest. Run With Neil is a 501(c)(3) solely run by volunteers, which means this grant and our community partnership would make it possible for almost every dollar we raised to run, at the run, to go back into the community. Over the last few years, we've been able to impact countless youth by providing resources needed for full-body wellness. We've worked alongside coaches for all ages to help financially support their teams to attend tournaments, purchase equipment, and attend camps based around physical, mental, and emotional health. Many of these youth would not be able to participate without the financial support we've been able to provide. We also work with the elementary, middle school, and the high schoolers to help bridge the gap with these mentorship programs. We feel that investing in these young people right now and supporting them, and I always get a little emotional when I talk about this, helps provide a brighter future for this whole area. With this grant, we would offset the cost of the run and be able to provide even more financial assistance to our youth and additional mentorship programs. Continued sponsorship of camps and clubs. We're also excited to announce that in 2024, we plan to have a high school scholarship for graduating seniors. We're often approached at events and hear from parents on how Run With Neil has helped open doors, communication with their kids, surrounding mental health. And that's what it's all about, reinforcing this vital need for the future of our community. Your support with CEP will grant effects, the financial impact we can make with our dollars raised. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Connie.
I had the privilege to coach Neil, like, in first grade, flag football, and he was one of my favorite of all time. Sit on your knee with the biggest smile. It was, it was a lot of fun and something I'll definitely always remember. That was 20 years ago. Yes.
I just want to get clarification. Is it 3,000 or 4,500?
4,500.
Okay.
They did 3,000 last year.
Yeah.
That's from last year.
Okay, maybe I'm right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Scapoose High School Basketball, or Scapoose High School Basketball, Youth Basketball Turnments, either one? Scapoose Senior Center.
Good evening. My name is Clara Pell, and I'm President of the Board of Directors at the Scapoose Senior Citizens. And I want to thank the Council and all of you guys for having us into this enhancement fund. And as a senior center, we provide services and activities to seniors and members of the community. And to further these activities and services, I'm going to state some of the functions we plan on doing in the future. Hopefully, some will be sooner. Bingo, we will be reinstated, a cook hired for the kitchen. The center's hours will be extended from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and eventually, we will hire an activity and fundraising director. I would also like to improve our membership, and I have some things going for that, but it'd take too long. Our finances are stable. Our main sources are thrift store, bread place, quilters, memberships, of course, building usage. Bingo, when reinstated. All our services are by volunteers. We do have an unpaid employee, and that's our receptionist, and also our bingo manager. And our maintenance issues seem to be our biggest problem, and that's hopefully where this fund would go, would be to our roof, portico, siding, of course, down the road. And that's why I'm here, is to see if you can't help with the maintenance issues. The rest of the building, I'm very happy to please, especially the inside, is very nice. Thank you for having me. Is there any questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Clara.
Okay, thank you, guys. And we all know where the Senior Center is, right?
We do.
All right, one left. St. Vincent de Paul.
I like to do that every now and again. That would be great. Always so patient.
My name's Mike Bradley. I'm with St. Vincent de Paul in Scapoose. We operate a two-day-a-week food pantry, a backpack program for kids in the school district, and we do some financial, personal financial assistance. We've asked you this year again for $3,000 to support the backpack program. I think you have, you have the application in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We do have something interesting this year, and I think it kind of parallels a lot of other things. We had a kind of a down, you know, our service went down during COVID, but we never stopped during the COVID. Even with the remote learning, we were able to get food to kids that were identified. But we've, and typically, the beginning of the school year, the numbers are higher than at the end, because people kind of drop off, maybe they leave. This year, we're going up toward the end of the year. So I think that's indicative of probably things to come, or pantries like that as well.
A question, do you help during the summer as well?
We, you know, we had some food at the high school. I think if you read the thing, kind of an unintended plus to this is we've been able to team up with NHS at the high school, and those kids are actively packing bags and helping with distribution, which is good, because we, with COVID, we were really tight with our facility and what we were able to do, and we, the school. And we, the school, we asked for some help and we found that, um, that worked. So summer-wise, we had food available and we've, uh, I've talked, actually talked with Sean. You know, there's some things we probably could do in conjunction with that program, so. Yeah, we, our expenditure last year was just about $7,000 for the, uh, the backpack portion of the profession. That was about 24% of what we do overall. It's roughly a quarter of.
Great, any questions? I appreciate it.
Very good program, thank you.
Thank you.
Got time, anybody else want to go? Okay, um. That being said, anything I said we want to present?
Um, no, just a reminder that all we're doing tonight is just kind of tallying up who's eligible for funding. Um, there's nothing that precludes any of these applicants. Uh, the Farmers Market, I would note, I didn't get a final or interim report on their, uh, status of last year's project. So, yeah, okay, I'll have to look for it. I'll take a look for that, I didn't see it, so.
Great.
Other than that?
Appreciate it. Anybody comments? Andrew, you good? All right, meeting adjourned, see you back at seven o'clock.